Yeah, I'm ready. Okay. All right, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers as well as those that might be viewing from home. This is a work session of the Pecoson City Council. It is February the 24th, which is a Monday, and we're going to hear about flood mitigation.
And we're waiting to get the screen up. Why don't you go over there and check, and I'll talk for a minute. I was very happy to be able to talk about this at this time because the first thing I'd like to do is share a recommendation that we're going to include in our master infrastructure plan for drainage, and that is a recommendation to develop watershed studies for specific drainage areas in the city. And the reason for that is a watershed study is often used by local governments to clearly identify issues and solutions in a particular watershed with the idea is you're really taking the time to look and see all the issues in a particular watershed instead of just thinking it's one issue or the other. What I've found over the last years, many years working here, is that typically small fixes throughout the drainage shed make big differences in flooding, in flood mitigation. In addition, identifying what the issues are, you can prioritize issues and solutions, figure out what is giving you the most improvement for your dollar. You can develop a list of projects with preliminary budgets and have them available if funding becomes available, if a grant application is offered, and you've got that justification in the modeling, in your study, in the analysis that you've done to justify that project to the people reviewing grant applications. Watershed studies have also been used for other reasons. For example, a local government recently used it with a bond rating agency to show that they were addressing recurrent flooding and to show that it was an issue that wasn't going to hurt the city and was, it made the city worth investing. So, that is one recommendation I'm going to talk about tonight as we get into it. Okay, good, very good. So, Pecoson's Drainage System, this is our public system. We drain over 3,100 acres in our drainage system. That's what's going through city-maintained pipes and ditches. We have 236 particular outfall points, and at those outfall points, we have about 26 miles of outfall ditches upstream of that. We have four or five times that length in roadside ditches and pipes and other drainage structures, and that is just what is draining city streets and infrastructure and private property that drains to that infrastructure. That is maintained by three full-time Public Works staff members, which is pretty incredible if you think about it. What happens when there is a prediction of a major storm event? The entire Public Works staff stops what they're doing and works with those three staff members to make sure that water's flowing during those storm events. Okay. All right, we also have private drainage systems. And our private infrastructure, while we haven't actually measured it, is probably several times larger than our public infrastructure. And what we mean by that are backyard ditches, commercial property drainage system, private road drainage systems, and these are things that the city does not necessarily have legal access to, we don't maintain, and it doesn't drain city property or city streets, but it's out there, and at times it gets to be a real issue. Okay. Flooding, obviously, there's two types of flooding, and anybody, I'm sure you guys, this is not new information. We have water that falls from the sky, and if it falls at such an intensity or volume that won't, that our drainage system can't handle at that moment, we have rainwater flooding. Tidal flooding, and by that, during this conversation, I'm going to be, what I mean is elevation-based, it's either the tide has risen or the wind is pushing water into a cove and getting into the system, and it's either flooding up through our drainage system or it's flooding over land. Okay? Typically, we drain very well at low tide. Not always, but compared to what you see in some other localities, we've had a really good track record with that. So, the big storms have always been the tidal storm events where we have a combination of all types of flooding, tide, wind, and rain. Isabel, the November nor'easter in 2009, and Hurricane Sandy are examples. Interestingly enough, when citizens call to voice concerns, the concerns we hear most frequently in order are concerns about poorly maintained or inadequate private drainage systems. What engineering does is if a citizen has an issue about standing water in their yard, some issue, we can go out as a courtesy and give them some recommendations for things they can do with their own private systems, and that seems to have helped some people. We also get requests for maintenance on the public system. And finally, the third most common issue is questions about new construction. People want to know what's going to happen to their yard when that house next door is finished being built. So, that's what we hear most often, not as much tidal flooding or questions about the big storms. All right. Since Isabel, we have made improvements. Obviously, Isabel had a huge impact on the city. The Oxford Run Ditch system has had capacity added two times. In 2004, we widened the northern portion of the ditch to add a little bit more flood storage. When we had to build the Two Bay, Chesapeake Bay TMDL ponds for water quality treatment, we also provided additional storage for floods, or for flood storage, and that was to benefit city infrastructure that wasn't done for any private developments. We've installed tide valves in three locations in recent years since Isabel. Two were installed to hold back tide, one was installed, was installed to hold back backflow from a ditch. So, if the ditch water level rose too high in the ditch, without that valve, it would flow into the street. This cuts down on that. We've made, fixed some choke points. We've upsized some curb inlets, some ditch sections, and some pipes over the years. Public education has been a big deal. That's not only helped citizens lower their flood insurance costs because of the work that Ken Somerset, the flood manager, has done, but also we've been trying to emphasize if you own it, if it fits your private ditch, maintain it, work with your neighbors, you know, keep the water flowing. The city's participated in home elevation grants, and the NASA flood prediction tool is used for planning before storms, planning city projects, and also education for the public. Ongoing work, master infrastructure plan. Every chapter of the book addresses a different type of city-owned infrastructure, and there's a chapter on drainage as well. Every chapter is talking about repetitive flooding and the impact on city infrastructure. And at the end of the document, we're halfway through the two-year prep time, we're going to have a list of ways that the public infrastructure could be impacted by flooding. And the idea there is to use that information, hopefully, to develop future projects to make sure that our infrastructure is safe and to make sure everybody's thinking about that with flooding. The With Creek Road widening project includes adding a bridge that is higher than the existing causeway. Right now, when we have a major storm like Hurricane Sandy, we lose the causeway, and there's one major way in and out of the city. This would hopefully provide a second way out of the city because that causeway elevation will be up out of the flood. And continuous work is more drainage projects, public education, and using that NASA tool to plan more effectively. Okay, tide barriers. As I said, we've installed two recently in Pecoson Shores, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And these pictures are from the Virginia Beach website. Virginia Beach uses tidal barriers and pump station combinations extensively. What they do is they do larger areas, they do multimillion-dollar projects, and they put in tidal barriers on large outfalls, and they also provide additional storage in their upstream drainage areas or pumping or both to get the road as dry as they can get it. The picture on the right is pre-tide gate, the picture on the left is post-tide gate. And you can see that the amount of flooding has been reduced, but the road is still wet. On here, okay. So, if you're trying to get rid of tidal flooding or trying to mitigate it, there's two options. One is to keep the tide out, understanding that when you do that, you have to plan for the fact that when you're keeping the tide out, you're keeping the rainwater in. And you can elevate roads and structures. That's more expensive perhaps than some of these tidal barriers, even though the big ones get very expensive with tidal barriers. But you're lifting the roads out, remember that a lot of residential, a lot of property drains to the road system, so you need to make sure you're accounting for that drainage so that you don't cut off those properties and create new flooding. Okay, tidal barriers come in all shapes and sizes, and as you're designing the project or thinking about it, you have to plan for the rainwater and think about those impacts on private properties. And what you'll find in a lot of cases when people are doing large-scale tidal barrier projects, they're modeling the watershed, and the reason why is they want to make sure they understand what was going on clearly before they installed it and what will happen afterwards, so they know where to build storage and pumping into the system if needed. There are additional expenses, including environmental permitting. If you've got tidal wetlands upstream of where you're installing your tidal barrier and you cut the tide off to those wetlands, you're going to have to do some mitigation. There are also ongoing maintenance concerns. Tidal barriers love to collect debris, and if they collect debris, they don't always work correctly. So, depending on the type of valve or gate you have, you probably have to have somebody out there looking at it on a regular basis. You also need, with some devices, you need to operate them periodically to make sure they're, exercise them to make sure they're working properly. Okay, this is back to the watershed, shattered study again and the type of issues you would look at. So, basically, when you're installing that tidal barrier, it takes, it's a good idea to get up or take the time to look at what's going on upstream because if someone thinks it's the tide, but it's just their curb inlet is too small or their backyard drainage ditch is too small, you may not be correcting all the sources of flooding. And oftentimes, you, it's good to take the time to decide whether one major improvement or a combination of smaller fixes is more cost-effective. And while you're making some major improvements, look at the existing system. We have pipes in the ground that are 50 years old or older, some are in good shape, some aren't. The guys have come in line some of the pipes that we have. It might be worth replacing pipes. What we have found with the tidal valves, we have slipped inside pipes, is the pipes we were slipping them into were so old that we had to replace the last section of pipe because the pipe was not in good enough shape and it fit and had, it had scale on the inside, and the fit was so tight, we couldn't get it in the existing pipes. And finally, the watershed planning stage or the project planning stage is a great time to communicate with the public. Sometimes people see you out doing something and they expect a solution, a total 100% solution, but the reality is there will always be a storm that's larger than what you're designing. So, you need to let, you know, people need to understand, and this is typically when that communication starts. I've heard the Dutch dialogues mentioned at previous council meetings. It's funny because Dutch dialogues is a lot how people in Pecoson live. They're used to some flooding, they live with the water, it's, you know, part of the joys and challenges of being in a coastal community. So, living with water is a Dutch dialogues theme, and what that means is you don't think in terms of eliminating flooding, you figure out where you can live with flooding and where you can't, and you plan accordingly. If you are in the Netherlands and you see a farm, sometimes you see a farm that's been, a field that's been terraced, one end of the field kind of stair steps down to a low spot, and that is for flooding. They know when the waters rise, that's where the water's going to sit, and, you know, when they have that with the rainstorm. Other, and the other thing about the Dutch dialogues is they think of secondary uses for flood storage areas. For example, they might have a low area near a river that's also a park. So, it's just a different way of thinking, but that's comprehensive watershed planning gives you the opportunity to do that. And then, the last one. So, ongoing, or next steps, continuing steps, the master infrastructure plan development is continuing, and we're going to recommend watershed studies. So, we really have some cost-effective solutions, and we can really make sure that hopefully we're targeting the areas that need it the most and give us the most for the money involved. The only other thing I really wanted to get into was in your handouts, you had questions and answers on tide valves, and so what they, the only thing that wasn't really covered in the presentation was the fact, some of the maintenance needs. There's the debris issue, oh, let me back up. Before we installed the current type of inline valves, years ago in the early 2000s, Pecoson had a couple duckbill valves that sat on the outside of the pipe, they attached to it, and the end of the duckbill of the valve kind of, this tube kind of rolled up. So, when the tide came, it, it kept the valve shut. When the storm water came in, it forced the valve open and water came out. Real simple theory, looked good. What they found, what Public Works found is, first of all, it was visible on the end of the pipe. So, there was a lot of vandalism. Not everybody understood how it worked, and they were very anxious to force it open before a big storm, so you'd find sticks holding the thing open. There were also issues with debris. That particular model got more debris stuck in it than the more recent model, and finally, there were barnacle issues. So, those things have, were removed years ago. What we have now are inline valves that kind of open with a flap. So, as the tide comes, it pushes the flap shut, won't open. When there's more storm water on the upstream end, when it's, there's more, a higher level of storm water than tide, it forces it open. We still are finding some vandalism. There's one tide valve where I always find a soda can stuck there holding the thing open. So, there's a soda drinker who does not like it. And we've had a little bit of trouble with barnacles and some debris buildup in that as well. So, there is a place, but you do need to invest in the manpower, the staffing time to get out there and really look at it. And interestingly enough, at Pecoson Shores, we didn't get a lot of feedback on the tide valve itself except for the immediate neighbors. The immediate neighbors do not like them. They feel that their driveways, their driveway aprons are, have more water pooled up there than before, and these are the neighbors that are next to the nearest curb inlet. In all likelihood, they might have an inch or two of water higher than it was before. And we send staff out there to monitor it, but it's still within a, the allowable spread for road design. But they're not very popular with the immediate neighbors, so we don't really have a good pool about, it isn't statistically significant enough to know whether it was a success or not. It's functioning when they're not vandalized, but they're not popular. And that's the information we have, and...
Ellen, we started this conversation, or this journey to get here with some conversation that happened at a council meeting a few months ago, and it was Councilman Southall that brought up a specific area, and I know you looked at that area. And if memory serves, and I probably want to know this exactly right, that watershed area that encompasses the area Councilman Southall was talking about is about 130 acres of the drainage area. So, when you're talking about a recommendation that we made with the upcoming master infrastructure plan for watershed studies, this is an example of that. So, to do a study of that watershed is somewhere in the neighborhood of about, what, $50,000, you think?
Yes, I think $50,000 to $60,000, and it would take about half a year, maybe nine months with the data we had. And what that would do is it would not only give recommendations for the tide valve, it would also look at what other issues might be in the watershed. So, what we would do is before, we had a consultant come in, we'd say, okay, these are what we, this is what we observed during rainstorms, and we would let them know. These, this is the information we have on the drainage structures in the area, and we have some very old, but for the most part, still good data. There was a drainage inventory that was done in the 70s and the 90s. And from that, they would model. And the reason you want that modeling is it gives you an idea of how the system play, the various components of the system play together. And from that, they would recommend some projects with some really very preliminary budget numbers.
All right, thank you very much for that. And Randy is right, I did start this, one of our residents, Mr. Forrest, provided me with some videos that he had gotten that showed some areas that were regularly being flooded in other cities and in other countries in some cases, when I have those videos I've offered to share with all the rest of the council members, okay? And the examples, many of the examples that he gave included areas such as the Dutch, where they did things on a scale that are financially impractical for the city because it involves dealing with private properties and building dykes around private properties, and that's something the city government, I know, can't get into, nor can we afford, okay? But we were also a part of fixing a flooding problem down off of Forest Road where they had some significant flooding in there because there was a gate valve type, flapper valve down there associated with a dike that had been damaged. The valve itself hadn't been damaged, but there was a dike, and what happened during Isabel, the dike around the valve had washed out, okay? So, the valve, although being there, was ineffective because it was a water path around the valve, okay? And they've got some significant flooding in there into the homes, and the homeowners' association provided most of the cost to the city, helped them somewhat, and we also got the drainage on the ditches better, okay? But since that gate valve has been repaired, the flooding in that area has gone down immensely. And my personal recollection during Isabel was that there was water that came into the heart of the city through tide, okay? Because there's, there's a ditch there that goes underneath Little Florida Road right there, close to where the new 185 restaurant is, that when I was a kid, that ditch was two feet wide, a foot and a half deep, okay? And there was never a flooding issue. A close friend that I used to spend much time with lived in a house adjacent to that ditch, and I can remember never seeing any flooding issues there. But then, we had some development take place in the city since then, and though that ditch became about four feet wide, about three feet deep, okay? And where you let water out, water also comes in. And during Isabel, the tide water came up all the way up toward the high school, okay? And that's where it came in, okay? And seeing what happened when we fixed the gate valve there off of Forest Road, the thought ran to my head, what happened, what would happen if we had a similar gate valve that would allow that ditch to remain effectively empty as the tide came up so that the water could drain into that ditch? And then, as the tide goes out, then the water goes out with the tide. And then, I thought the same about the big ditch that goes back off of With Creek Road there, close to the dentist office that drains the property adjacent to the new project that's going back there, yeah? And I think we need to look at the flooding issues, okay? And be proactive where we can. I know we don't have a lot of money, okay? But the things we can do, we should. And I don't know if those valves will work, I'm not a hydrology engineer, okay? But what I saw change there off of Forest Road made a significant difference, okay? I came down Victory Boulevard about a week and a half, two weeks ago, we had, that day we had about a two-inch rain, and the water was flowing in from TAB, down the ditch, into the ditch back here behind City Hall, and that ditch was about two-thirds full because we had an unusually high tide. Now, had the tide water not, and we didn't have any wind, rain, or hurricane at the same time, that was just a one-time, two-inch rainfall, okay? If we were to have a hurricane event at the same time, that ditch would have been crammed full, okay? And so, the thought would be if you could keep the tide out of that ditch to allow the rainwater to go into it, okay? So that it could go out when the tide went out, at least the rainwater would have a place to go. Again, I'm not an engineer in that area, okay? But the part of me that thinks technically with what I think is common sense says that would be better. I don't know, okay?
I think you would find there are some very good sites, very good applications for tidal barriers here. The Forest Road situation was more cost-effective because there was an existing dam there. So, there were a lot of environmental rules that were, or environmental procedures that were not in place when that dam was put in. So, if you were to replicate that somewhere else, it would be, I think, significantly more expensive. Doesn't mean it couldn't be done, I'm just saying it would be more expensive. The other thing about that Forest Road site is if you looked at the ditch there, they had a flat area on either side that provided that storage I was talking about. So, I think there are some wonderful locations and opportunities to use tidal barriers. My recommendation would just be to make sure you, we take the time to study and really understand the pros and cons. I think there are a lot of, I think tidal barriers are a wonderful tool to have in the toolkit. Also, the larger the watershed, the more the costs go up. If you look at the Virginia, we didn't really come up with any good cost estimates for this because the, the drainage areas were, you know, were not settled on a specific area. But if you look at what Virginia Beach is spending for similar watersheds, they can get into the millions of dollars. It all depends on the characteristics of the particular watershed. One way to really get into it would be to start and prioritize what watersheds you want to address, you know, based on some parameter like, I don't know, repetitive loss or something, and then take it from there and really figure out what would work in that particular scenario. And you may find something totally different works in the next watershed.
Okay, well, a little further thought along those lines was that, and Mr. Forrest made a comment similar to this to me, was, you know, if we have a big flood, we'll find the money to fix what gets torn up, okay? Wouldn't it be better to find that money to fix it before it happens and just not have it get torn up, okay? And with that same thought in mind, you know, we had a lot of flooding in the household area back up behind and the area across Little Florida Road. And that water got there because the tide got there, okay? And where we can be proactive, and I would hope that we could maybe talk with the environmental people. Say, look, you have some grant money. Let's take some grant money and let's support these kind of projects with grant money rather than having to find grant money to repair properties, okay? And one would hope that government somewhere would have enough common sense to say, hey, it's a better idea to plan ahead for these events and use grant money for proactive purposes than it is to replace whole neighborhoods. I think you ought to try to be proactive with that grant money.
So out of this, I'm hearing your recommendation to do a watershed study. So what's the timeline looking going ahead, moving forward?
On the watershed study?
Yeah.
If, if the, once a watershed is identified...
Oh, I thought I heard that we had three.
We had, we had one, the watershed we were talking about specifically was the one that Councilman Southall had identified. And that particular one, the cost estimate in doing the watershed study for that, 130 approximately acres, was fifty to sixty thousand dollars and might take six months.
After consultant procurement, I should add that too.
And is that the Oxford Run watershed?
No.
What is that?
That is, it's off of Little Florida, it's the first, the westerly branch of the channel.
Yeah, by the 185 restaurant?
Okay.
Okay, and...
Is there a possibility of getting grant money to cover that kind of study?
We can research grant opportunities there.
I would think, I don't know, but I think, we're much better off, once we've done these kinds of studies and we've identified the improvements and their incremental impacts, the kinds of things that Ellen's talking about here in the first dark blue bullet, at some point, we've got to prime the pump. And we think that this is a way to begin to address the issues that you're talking about, and at least in the watershed, by watershed basis. We, obviously, we could, whatever you all think is appropriate is what we're going to do. If you want us to move straight to design, to procure a consultant to design a specific improvement, we can do that too. But we don't have any money right now allocated for any of these kinds of purposes. So we would need to work with you to identify both the money to design the improvements, model them either on the watershed basis or the micro, and then work with you for construction as well.
Well, I will look for you for your advice in that area, okay? But I would hope we could find some grant money to cover those costs.
Good, Buddy?
Just a question and then a comment. Ellen, do we have a handle on how many watersheds are throughout the city?
I don't have that tonight, it's going to be twenty thirty, I think. That's just off the top of my head, but I'd like to go back and check that.
And the other thing is, I agree, I think, to my way of thinking, this watershed study should come first, not jump in there and try to design something and we don't even have the parameters of what we're designing for. And the other thing is, with the existing inline structure, if that design comes up as to be the best in these other watersheds, would it be prudent to come back away from the outfall and build a structure? And put the inline valve in that pipe coming into that structure? And put a locking top on the structure? And it would, it should eliminate the vandalism because it's just so easy to come down to the end of the pipe and mess with it.
Mm-hmm.
What, I mean, we talked about that. I mean, you could insert it into the upstream end of the pipe, which is next to the drain inlet, for example. You know, the manhole up there. From a maintenance standpoint from Public Works, I think, for their standpoint, I think what you just suggested would probably be preferable where you had a vault they could get into and get to to access and service the pipe if, or the valve if need be. But that's definitely an issue, so.
And I think that's a good idea, Bud.
I agree. So, all right, so back on your, about the fourth slide. Which, which type of flooding drives the highest losses in the city of Pecoson? Is it stormwater or tidal?
I think it would, I mean, in general, you'd think it was tidal, but it can also be strongly influenced by stormwater. It's kind of, it's a case-by-case base, and it's not a case where you can solve one necessarily, let the other one go.
Okay. I would agree that it's tidal may be influenced by stormwater, but it's tidal.
I would think that's right.
And, and I think what I've, what I've heard council say for several years now is, you know, we, we do talk about this once every couple of years, and we really don't move the ball, right? So I'm saying, I agree with Buddy that we ought to get a run at some of the numbers of the watersheds. And I think that we ought to be talking about, you know, how to prioritize based out of that. Because obviously, there are some watersheds that you can impact, and I don't think there's others. The other one is that the most common thing, when you went back and said, what are the most common complaints? I do hear the concerns about poorly maintained or inadequate private drainage, okay? So I'm all about that. Besides consulting, should we start to stand up areas where the citizens, very similar to what we did in Big Woods, where the neighbors can maybe all work together to, I'm not asking you to go do it, but should we be, you know, bringing the neighborhood in and talking about how that looks? And I'll tell you, prime example is Little Florida Road, right there by Cedar Road, where we trapped all that water. And the neighbors seem to think that it came from a development downstream. But, you know, I've heard both, I've heard both sides of this coin, right? But certainly, there are ditches that the private citizens could improve. And I don't think we've ever had them all in and said, hey, you know, we know you're pooling water at this location, but what can you do about it? I don't know, I do think that we need to be, you know, not wait for the next flood to take action.
That can be by the watershed study.
Yep. Yeah, it should be. It should address how to, how to get the private citizens to do more on their property and how to enable that through the myriad of what we deem to be environmental protection. But basically, it's just protects you and makes sure that your land's going to flood because you can't get to the outfall. So some work like that might be factored into your plan. Anything else of council?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, since I've been on council, I've gotten four phone calls I can remember about flooding issues. And actually, one meeting was with a guy before I was on. But he had a unique situation where he was on the lower side of Ridge Road. And his parent, his immediate neighbors had built up, so he was in a soup bowl and everything drained into his yard. You know, but one thing he did say, and that Ellen, you brought up, you know, that the pipe that drained his yard was too small. You know, it wasn't adequate, and it was old, which, you know, I think your comments tonight probably confirm that. So, and then the other three or four calls I've had were, wound up all being private ditches, you know? And it was an issue of, well, actually, it's your neighbor dumping his leaves and, you know, your ditch. Sure, you aren't keeping up with it. So I think one thing we can and should do is look at what pipes that we know are suspect to be old and inadequate and, you know, see where we can make replacement or increase size, whatever we have the means to do with the resources we have. And, you know, of course, Tom and his guys do a great job. We, our citizens live with water, they know it's coming. But I think our biggest priority is how fast and how effectively we can get it out of the city when the river allows us.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Okay, thanks, Ellen.
Close the work session and move on to the regular session. Okay, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers, as well as those viewing from home. This is a regular meeting of the Pecoson City Council, Monday, February the 24th. I'll call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise. I'll lead you in the invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we receive in this city. As we move forward on the issues before us this evening, we ask for a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate those. And Lord, make us all always mindful of our citizens and their needs. We ask for your blessing and presence that it be felt by those who serve in our military, especially those, Lord, who serve in foreign lands as they protect all of us here at home. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move forward on anything else, I think we want to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend our agenda by adding, under item G, new business, a second bullet for the, make an appointment to the Pecoson Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate.
Okay, is there a second?
Sir.
Okay, a motion made in second, that we modify the agenda and add an appointment to the BCA and, under new business, item G two. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please?
Certainly. Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. Next item is an audience for visitors. If there's somebody in the audience this evening that would like to address council on any subject, not one of the public hearings, but any other issues. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of February 10th, 2020.
Senator.
Okay, motion made in second, we approve those minutes. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Seeing none, Evie, please?
Certainly.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, we have a series of public hearings here this evening. First is a resolution approving a modification of the terms of rezoning of 2.37 acres of property located on the west side of With Creek Road, immediately to the south of TJ Sports Tavern. And these are tax map parcels 27, tag oh nine, tag double zero, tag zero 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 two, and 2718, tag zero 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 two. And this is from B two business to VC Village Commercial. Are you going to do the staff report on all three of these?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'm just going to let, I'm just going to read these, and then we'll open the hearing separately. The second one is a resolution approving a modification of the existing conditional use permit, which allows residential dwellings above the second floor in mixed-use building and residential separate from a commercial or mixed-use structure and not to exceed two-thirds of the commercial area. And that's on the two, on very similar tax map parcels in the same area. And the third is a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow residential separate from commercial and/or mixed-use structure not to exceed two-thirds. And again, that's on the same general area of the city. All right?
Thank you. Good evening. As the mayor just pointed out, we are going to, I'm going to cover three different cases in this presentation, three requests, the resuming amendment, the conditional use permit amendment for phase three, and the new conditional use permit for phase four. I'm going to start with the rezoning. The rezoning was originally to go from B two to VC under a rezoning concept plan, which is radically different or fairly different this time around. And I'll point out what those differences are here in a minute. Phase one and phase two, and I may have to move a little bit so this pointer shows up. Phase one and phase two, we've got a site plan approved for phase two. Phase one building has been built. It's the only one that's been built so far. Phase three is in this area, also zoned Village Commercial. And then phase four is on the other side of the Economic Development Authority pond. So it's all VC zoned now, that scenario. But, okay, the difference, the changes, the main changes are that these two buildings, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to move.
Well, when you do that, no one can hear you at all.
I know.
You'll take the microphone with you. Well, can I take this one? You might be able to take this one.
Or we can put somebody else with a pointer.
Yeah. Well, we can get it just right here. That's pretty cool. Okay, very good.
All right.
So now I can move up here. All right. It's green.
It's green now.
Very good.
Oh, yeah, I can hear it, okay. All right, buildings four and five, I'm sorry.
Buildings four and five, right here, are going to be strictly residential buildings. Previously, there were going to be two-storied residential and commercial on the ground floor. So they're not going to be that way anymore. Building six is going to be all commercial. What's happened here is that in phase four, you may remember that phase four was all residential previously. Residential, there is going to be residential, but there's also going to be a commercial element in phase four as well. So really, when you take a look at phase three in its entirety and phase four in its entirety, both of the phases are now meeting the two-thirds, 66.67% residential and rest, commercial. So those are being met in both those phases. But again, it is a difference from what was previously approved. As I said, phase two had already been, has been approved, and we're awaiting some fees basically on that one. And then, you know, Mr. Moses will get to work on that. Mr. Moses, being the principal of Fountains LLC.
Part of what I did here is I did a corrected table, trying to take a look at the parking that... that we had allowed as part of phase two and phase one, and taking a look at the parking that was going to be shown, as well as the scrimmage of the, of the buildings in phase three and phase four. And what I come up with is that he's got, basically, he's got plus one space of parking that's available on this site. The reason I went into this exercise is that he had indicated one space for 300 square feet of commercial, the zoning ordinance actually calls for one space per 200 square feet of commercial. So that's just a correction there. The planning commission went ahead and acted on this. They did approve this, six to, six to zero. They did not include any provision that's just being included in the map, but of course, if you approve it tonight, it will be part of the rezoning concept plan. This is the previous rezoning plan. I think I pointed out the differences fairly well, but you'll notice that, just to point out in sake of a little bit of, maybe, but that was all, phase four was all going to be residential, and quite a bit of residential. And phase five and four were going to have ground floor and commercial, and that was going to be all commercial. So really, again, the density from four to five is going to be transferred to the same. Okay, now I think I've already talked about the parking requirements. And we'll try to double blast you with microphones here. All right, as I mentioned before, it's one per 200 square foot parking requirement. The planning commission did not hold this recommendation until that parking diagram that I just showed you was included as part of the concept development plan. And then I get to the actual changes that Mr. Moses and Fountains are proposing to rezoning for the 47. Some of this has already been covered. Obviously, the layout of any development of the site is going to need to generally adhere to the conceptual plan dated December 19th, 2019, and entitled Exhibit, The Fountains of Pecoson, Phases One, Two, Three, and Four, a Village Mixed Use Development. Again, this proposed language is simply updates to layout information. That's all that's really happening here. At no time shall the development in its entirely entirety exceed nine units per acre. Looked at this as part of the review. No changes proposed, and based on the units provided in the table, it appears this requirement will continue to be met. Number three, he proposed, that is, Mr. Moses, Fountains LLC, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, a bounty line adjustment plat must be prepared and recorded vacating all property lines. It was pointed out in a planning commission meeting, and I believe planning commission agreed, as well as Mr. Moses, that you can't really approve a site plan with buildings straddling across park property lines. So we're going to keep that prior to site plan approval. All development located 200 feet or closer, and by the way, that is reflected in your resolution to approve. All development located 200 feet or closer to With Creek Road shall be reserved for only commercial use, no change proposed. Setbacks from With Creek Road and adjacent properties not zoned Village Commercial shall be consistent with the requirements of the B2 Business Commercial Zoning District. I'm really not sure why this is still, since the whole thing is zoned VC, I'm not really sure why this is in there, but, but it was carried forth from the previous, previous rezoning amendment that made all this VC Village Community in the first place, Village Commercial, I should say. No change proposed, the entire fountain development is zoned Village Commercial. Okay, here's the fairly big one. Phase four may be constructed separately and independent of phase three, provided phase four meets its ratios via conditional use permit and ordinance. Staff comment, while staff feels that a separation of the two phases with independent ratios being met makes some sense, and I think I pointed that out earlier, it is nevertheless important to keep parts of the current provision intact to preserve some guarantee that the city will see commercial units prior to the entirety of all the residential units being built up over phases three and phases four. In other words, if we don't have this condition, Mr. Moses could, in theory, build all of the residential, both in phase four and phase three, unless we have some sort of provision in place to provide, to make sure that we're getting some commercial at the same time we're getting a residential. We did hear from Mr. Moses that phase four could be built prior to phase three. Therefore, the planning commission recommended the following wording, which will come up on this next slide. It's a mouthful. Phase four may be constructed separately and independent of phase three, provided phase four meets its ratios via CUP and ordinance. However, big however, phase four shall in no circumstance be constructed prior to the construction of the commercial structure located in phase three, as depicted on the conceptual plan dated December 19th, 2001, entitled Exhibit, Pecoson's, Fountains of Pecoson, Phases One, Two, Three, and Four, a Village Mixed Use Development. Likewise, phase three shall in no circumstance be constructed prior to the construction of the commercial structures in phase four, should phase four be constructed prior to This is significantly, significantly, I should say, more permissive than what is currently in effect. It allows the applicant to move into another phase of development without certificates of occupancy being issued for the commercial buildings in the previous phase, whether that be phase three or phase four. The commercial building only has to be built, so we're not requiring a certificate of occupancy. The city council may feel it necessary to retain requirements for a certificate of occupancy for the commercial buildings in phase four or the commercial building in phase three, depending on which phase is to be constructed first, prior to allowing construction to commence in the next phase. The planning commission did not retain that provision. Approval of the rezoning request does not constitute site plan approval. The applicant understands that, no change is proposed. Staff did conduct a courtesy review of phase three site plans and sent comments to the applicant and his engineer on the 13th of December of just this past year, 2019. Identified in these comments, and I believe you've got a copy of that with you, are several items that will need to be satisfied prior to approval of that site plan. The comments are provided as part of the packet. It was five-page comments, so there's a fair amount of comments still left outstanding. We considered it a courtesy review because a lot of what was proposed on that site plan was contingent upon the city council's approval of rezoning amendment, conditional use permit amendment, and the new conditional use permit for phase four. So that's the rezoning amendment. Then we get into the conditional use permit amendment, which is for phase three, same thing as the rezoning. Phase three, same properties. I did not regurgitate that here. Let me go back one, sorry. This one's an important one, too. As it currently stands, phase three and phase four are wrapped together in one conditional use permit. And as a condition of that conditional use permit, number one, the developer must contain, must convey a 50-foot portion of the property at the northern side of tax map parcel 21-8, 21-1-87 to provide for continuation of Alpha Street right away. Let me go back to that site plan. I hate to have to do this, but I think it's important.
This is the extension that we're talking about right here, Alpha Street going back to the entrance of phase four. So essentially, what the applicant is proposing is to not build this extension as part of phase three, but to wait till phase four begins to be built to put in that extension. Right now, because the two conditional use permits are wrapped together, right now, the fact that three and four wrapped together means that Alpha Street has to be put in prior to any additional construction, whether it be phase three or phase four. So that's, what that would do, if the city council grants that, would delay the Alpha Street extension until phase four is built, if you build phase three first. Now, obviously, if you can start phase four first, then we're going to require the Alpha Street be built.
Sorry to have to flip through these again for, okay, so that's what that really means. Section 11-3.2D of the City Pecoson Zoning Ordinance, Village Commercial, does state where there is residential separate from commercial. The developer must construct all required infrastructure to include ingress, egress, stormwater features, and all necessary utilities prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for buildings on the site. Because she's separated phase three from phase four, if the city council is amenable, obviously, that's up to the city council, we can put the construction of this road off until phase four, because phase three will be built independently of phase four now. But there again, unless the applicant has granted the ability to design and build the Alpha Street extension as part of phase four, the conditional use permit that I'll cover in a minute, the road must be designed and built as part of phase three, prior to any COs being granted for that phase. Okay. The rest of these changes are a little simpler. There's no change. Approval of architectural review board shall be required on all buildings, including the residential component, prior to site plan approval. No change proposed. That will be enforced as part of the site plan review, probably depending on what we do with the ARB. If the project is not constructed and fully operational within five years, the issuance of this permit, the conditional use, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. There's no change proposed here, however, two options make themselves available as part of this change. Number one, the granting of the permit could move the current deadline from 9/12/21, which is what it is right now, to five years from approval of this amendment, if granted by city council. This date would coincide with the deadline for completion of phase four, allowing developer a choice of beginning with either phase three or phase four within similar timeframes. This is what, this language here is currently reflected in the resolution to approve the conditional use permit amendment to phase three. However, in talking about this before y'all got this packet, we need to specify a specific date, such as 2/24/25, on the resolution to approve, if that's the way city council wants to go. Another option does present itself as well. The second option would be to maintain an earlier deadline for completion of phase three of 9/12/21, or another date deemed appropriate by the city council. Likewise, establishment of this earlier date will require a specific date to be stated in the resolution to approve the conditional use permit to phase three. So anywhere from 9/12/21 to, let's see, 2/12, 2/24, 25. The development now shall not yield more than nine units per acre, same condition it's on the rezoning. Staff assessment indicates the condition will be followed. All conditions cited within a conditional use permit dated tonight, if it's approved, or some other time, or it could stay what it is now, shall be adhered to. And that would just be an update to the approval date of this amendment, if it's indeed granted by the city council. This is an old condition, no, no change proposed. Shared trash containers shall not be visible from the public right of ways and shall be screened in accordance with the city's site plan and zoning ordinance requirements. I believe that's still a comment that we have on phase three right now. No change proposed will be in part of the, enforced as part of the review. The applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. Sort of goes without saying, no change proposed. Again, this does not constitute site plan approval. There'll be a site plan approval process. And this is going to read very much like, like the condition that I spent some time on in the rezoning. Previously, on the, on the phase three and phase four tied together, conditional use permits, there was a lot of concern at the time of approval as to whether the commercial would be built. And so what was required at that time was documentation in the form of lease agreements and issued certificate of occupancy verifying the two-thirds of commercial and residential components of the entire development, have leaseholders at the time of building permit This proposed change is not carried forward, much in the same way of the rezoning, it's, it's not as strict. The, and again, city, planning commission recommended this unanimously, too, with basically the same language that you saw with the rezoning. Phase four may be constructed separately and independent of phase three, provided phase four meets its ratios via CUP and ordinance. And then it goes into phase four, shall in no circumstance be constructed prior to the construction of the commercial structure located in phase three, as depicted on the exhibit. A village mixed use, likewise, I'm sorry, likewise, phase three shall in no circumstance be constructed prior to the construction of the commercial structures in phase four, should phase four be constructed prior to phase three. The recommended language, language, as I said a minute ago, is significantly more permissive than what is currently in effect, by the allowing the applicant to ability to move into phase four, prior to COs being issued for the commercial building in phase three, and lease agreements being submitted to the city for the same. Now, remember, we're talking about phase three here, so everything's written from the standpoint of, of phase three. More permissive, less restrictive. Basically, all he has to do is build the building, and then he can move into the next phase, being phase four, in this case. Again, as I said, with the rezoning, the city council may feel it necessary to retain requirements for CO and/or lease agreements for the commercial buildings in phase three, prior to allowing construction to commence in phase four, should phase three be constructed prior to phase four. Okay. With that being said, we'll move into phase four. Phase four is a new conditional use permit. Again, there's the zoning, it's all VC. And there's the actual parcel. It's, it's a very long parcel and also a very narrow parcel. One of the things that staff did as part of this rezoning on the concept plan that you've got is to verify that all setbacks were being met and, and that sort of thing. This is where the developer wishes to convey the 50-foot portion of the property for the Alpha Street right away from the east of this property. Developer must construct improvements to Alpha Street on the portion fronting the development. Improvements include paving, sidewalk construction, and installation of curb and gutter in accord with VDOT standards to allow for the future acceptance of the street into the city's maintenance system, prior to any certificate of occupancy. All improvements must be reviewed and approved by city staff. I'm just going to say that this is the same thing. I mean, he's basically, instead of quoting the code to you, I've done that once before. This is just the applicant's wish to put off the Alpha This is just the applicant's wish to put off the Alpha Street extension to phase four, which is what's really gonna necessitate it in the first place. Approval of the ARB shall be required on all buildings. Condition will be enforced as part of the site review. If the project is not constructed and fully operational within five years of the issuance of this permit, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. Much like in phase three, you have two options. You can give them five years from this date, or you can stay with the old date of 9/12/21, or you can sort of choose a date in between there. The developments shall not yield more than nine units per acre. We think they're okay with that. Trash containers have to not be visible from public right of ways, shall be screened in accordance with city's site plan and zoning ordinance requirements. Certainly, that'll be enforced as part of the site plan review. Applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. Approval of this use permit does not constitute site plan approval. I think he knows that already. And we've got eight. Residential units may be constructed and occupied prior to construction of commercial buildings. Again, staff understands that within each phase, he may want to build residential first because of favorable banking arrangements and that sort of thing, which he states on his applications. What this is saying, though, is that he at least needs to build the commercial building in each of these phases, depending on which one he does first, before moving on to the residential in another phase. That's really about the only way that we can guarantee that some commercial gets built at this point. And it's the same language I've been over twice, basically. Planning commission language. Planning commission came up with this language, and again, this is another one that was recommended for approval unanimously. Basically, it says just that you can't do phase... You can't move to another phase until you've built the commercial structure in the previous phase. That's what this is basically saying. Okay, that's a lot of talking on my part. I'm sure you have a lot of questions, so I'll be happy to take them.
All right, any questions, council?
Yeah, I do. When you say that the commercial portions have to be built, are we specifying that they have to be built to the stage of allowing a CO to be issued, so that he just can't build the framework and then say, all right, that's good enough till I get an occupant? Because we're relieving the lease requirements, right?
Yes, yes. What that means essentially, and Mr. Moses explained it a little bit at the planning commission meeting, and I'm sure he can address it tonight, but what that really means is that we're looking for the building to be built. As I understand it from the applicant, that you don't exactly know how much building area one potential leaseholder's gonna need, so you wait to build out the interior... The interior portions, whether it be drywall or some other material. So yes, in effect, you would have a shell of a building. I mean, you know, Ken would have to approve the general building from a building standpoint to make sure that that building is safe, but as far as the certificates of occupancy for each suite within that building, that is not listed as a requirement in the planning commission's recommendation, which is why I said the city council may want to consider it, because the main concern here is that some commercial gets built. That's really the main concern.
I just wanna make sure that I understood what you said correctly. So the ratio of commercial to residential is still the same. It's just shifting...
Yes.
That phase three and four combined is still the same ratio of... It's just that some of the commercial is moving, excuse me, from phase three to phase four. It's just shifting.
Correct. Correct. It's shifting. It's shifting. That's exactly right. Previously, you had... Well, you had one-third of two buildings and 100% of one building that was all commercial, but then you had phase four that was all at least 24... I think it was 24 units, if I'm remembering correctly, all residential. So yes, he is... He's moving the percentages. He's still two-thirds residential to commercial, but he's just... He's doing it individually in each phase now, rather than having one phase carry the other.
And the Alpha's extension request, would it have to be built? Is there... Does it specify at the beginning or end of the phase when it has to be built? Does it have to be built before that phase four starts, or during, or just by the end?
Uh, well...
Is there a timeline for during the phase when it would have to be built?
Let me see. That's a... Let's see what that... How that reads. I think that's gonna be in the conditional use permits. Let me see here.
I tried to read. I didn't see where it specified.
Yeah, I don't think it's as clear as it could be.
Wally?
Yes, sir.
My recollection, you can point us to the section, but in Village Commercial, when there is a separation of the commercial from the residential...
Mm-hmm.
And in this case, Mr. Moses is asking that each phase stand on its own.
Right.
So there is language in one of the slides that you had that lays this out.
Yes, there is. That's what I'm looking for now.
Because the infrastructure relating to that phase is required before certificate... I believe it's before certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
But you did go over that language. It's right here.
I did. I did, and I can't seem to find it right now. It's crazy. Yeah, okay. Construct all required infrastructure to include ingress, egress, stormwater features, and all necessary utilities prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for buildings on the site. So yes, Alpha Street would have to be built before any COs were issued for anything in phase four.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't find the slide. I was looking for it.
All right, any other questions, council?
All right. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the first public hearing. This is a resolution authorizing a modification of the terms of rezoning 2.37 acres of property on the west side of With Creek Road from B2 Business to VC Commercial. I'll open that public hearing if anybody would like to speak. Bob?
Let me give you the 3,000-foot view of what we're gonna do here. Buildings four and five are commercial spaces and that is by the pond. The banks don't like that. They don't think that commercial space is viable, so they've asked me to move it. The only way to move it is to front, and they wanted it to front into the With Creek or Alpha. Only way to do that is to move it over to phase four. So that's basically what we did in the concept plans. In doing that, we've got to go back and unravel the rezoning with the amendment, and then the CUP with the amendment, and then wrap up with a amendment that allows both phases or each phase to be developed independently. That's what we're trying to do. The goal here is to go ahead and proceed, as we've already discussed, with completing phase two while also trying to go ahead and build out phase four. The all-commercial building in phase three, the banks are requiring preleases before they're gonna give me the money to build. So that is a contingency of the bank, for me to even start in phase three, so I gotta get preleases for it, all of building sets. And right now, I have none. So phase three looks like it's gonna have to wait a little bit longer, but it doesn't mean I cannot go ahead and start completing phase two as well as moving to phase four. In phase four, certainly Alpha Street, we will start extending that so we can get onto the property and then proceed with the building out of phase four. I have interest in at least two townhouses, and I have interest in the smaller... The buildings closest to Alpha, is that seven and eight? Seven and eight, those are smaller office spaces, about 1,000 square feet, and I have interest in smaller office spaces. Right now, the smallest office space I can offer is in building one, at about 1,250 square feet, and that's still just a whole two. That's where the date here is. So that's what we're trying to do here, just being able to unravel phase three and phase four so that I can meet the banks' requirements on me while also proceeding as hard as I can for getting to the commercial building and the two apartment buildings together.
All right, thanks, Bob. Does anybody else want to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a modification of the terms of rezoning of 2.37 acres of property located on the west side of With Creek Road, immediately to the south of TJ Sports Tavern, tax map parcel numbers 270900302 and 271800302, from B2 Business to VC Village Commercial.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, we approve this resolution. Questions or comments?
Just the statement that the planning commission recommended be added about the commercial before doing both residentials, is that part of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It was added as part of their approval process.
Any other thing else? Okay. Evie, please.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay. Second public hearing is on a resolution approving a modification to the existing conditional use permit, which allows residential dwellings above the second floor in a mixed-use building. Is anybody prepared this evening to address council on that? Okay, seeing none?
Gee, excuse me. Does that include the portion where we relieve the need for leases?
Does that include the portion where we would do what now?
Relieve the need for leases.
Wally, why don't you come up? If I could restate your question a little bit and see if... Does this modify a previous condition that required the percentage of commercial building space be built and leased?
Just curious, for the same recommendation that we just made with the rezoning, which basically it doesn't have a requirement condition of that.
Wally? As recommended by the planning commission, it removes the previously approved language to that effect. All right, thank you. That's the answer to the question.
Okay.
All right. Had a motion... No, that was a public hearing. All right, so I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a modification of an existing conditional use permit, which allows residential dwellings above the second floor in a mixed-use building and residential separate from a commercial and/or mixed-use structure, not to exceed two-thirds of the commercial floor area of the development in the Village Commercial District on property specifically identified as tax map parcel numbers 270900302 and 2718-00302 and 2701000087.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, we approve this resolution approving the modification of the existing conditional use permit. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is unusual. Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Wally, if you could come forward. If the... Just to answer this so that there's no room for misinterpretation. If the resolution is approved as presented, what is the end date of the life of this conditional use permit?
We have recommended one of these best... As it is, the way we live, we have to look back and weigh up. The feeling was that it did extend to five years, but I think it would be a good idea for the city council to fix the date.
So if I could ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If the council doesn't make a change, is it indefinite? Or as written, what's the answer to the question? Okay, I'm looking for that language, and I don't see it.
If you look in the resolution, it may not give it exactly, but on page two, the section on number two, it says, "The project is not constructed and fully operational within five years of usage of this permit." The conditional use permit should become null and void.
Thank you. Again, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a modification to an existing permit, which has the same language. You and I had this conversation. So if they do not modify this language, I just wanna make clear that it's either five years from the date this original permit was approved, or it's five years from now. And for the purposes of preventing a misunderstanding, I would respectfully ask the council to clarify the motion to see what its expectation is so that we have no downstream misunderstanding.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to modify my motion to read under section one, item two. If the project is not constructed and fully operational within five years of the issuance of this permit or the year... The date 2/24/25, the conditional use permit shall become null and void.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made, and seconded, that we modify that motion. Okay. Questions or comments on that?
Okay. Evie, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, and the third one is a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow residential separate from commercial and/or mixed-use structure, not to exceed two-thirds of the commercial floor area of the development in this district. Is there a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow residential separate from a commercial and/or mixed-use structure, not to exceed two-thirds of the commercial floor area of the development in the Village Commercial District on property specifically identified as tax map parcel number 2701000087, with the following addition under section one, item three. If the project is not constructed and fully operational within five years of the issuance of this permit or by 2/24/25, the conditional use permit shall become null and void.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, we approve this resolution with that effective cutoff date. Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay. For those of you that are joining us at noon, it's gonna be a little bit of unusual format for council at this point in order to meet. So if you wanna sign off, that's fine, cancel some replay. We're gonna do a series of closed sessions. First of all, we need to discuss school board appointments, then we're gonna come back, reconvene, and make an appointment, and then we're gonna do our comments and our council directives, and then we're back in closed session in a second period. So I just wanna warn everybody, if council meetings come closed at this point. So with that said, I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I so move we go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, Evie, please.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, thank you, and we're in closed session. Okay, thank you, and we're in closed session. Okay, we're back from closed session, and I'll ask for a motion that we certify that closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session, and that we talked about only what we convened in the closed session to talk about.
Okay, now, okay, sorry, Evie please.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried, motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, we're into the section for new business, and we have two items under here. The first is a resolution making appointments to the Pococin City School Board. Somebody prepared with a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Pococin City School Board with the following names inserted. For the Central Precinct, Mr. Jonathan Ingram, whose term will expire June 30th, 2021, and the at-large position, Mr. Gary Carter, whose term will expire on the same date.
Second.
Second. Motion made, second, we make those two school board appointments. Questions or comments? Second, E.V., please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, and per our amendment earlier, the, we, next is an item making a, a resolution making appointments to the BZA. Somebody prepare with a motion there.
Mayor, I move that we pass a resolution making an appointment to the Pecosin Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate, Mr. Ryan Holloway, from the Western Precinct, whose term will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we appoint Mr. Holloway to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Questions or comments? E.V., please.
Councilwoman An, Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, Randy, contra, uh, comments to the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, two things, and they're both related. Uh, one of the top two questions that you get asked most often, sure, the city manager for Pecosin, is when is the Surf Rider going to open? I'm pleased to share with everyone that, uh, that it's March the second. And, uh, between that date and this date, we also have another restaurant opening in the city, uh, one eighty-five, which will open midweek this week, so that's, uh, that's great news for the city. Encourage folks to go out and visit both of them. Maybe not on opening night, give them a, give them a day or two to settle in, but, uh, I just wanted to, wanted to answer particularly that first question, since I get asked it all over the region.
Okay, very good. Councilman Hux, do you have any directives this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no comment tonight.
Councilman Green.
Just to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Mobile Food Pantry at the Old City Hall from ten to one, and our host this time are the city employees.
Very good. Councilman Canelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to, uh, acknowledge our high school wrestling team. I had the privilege of going to Salem and watching them compete in the state tournament, uh, over the weekend, and for the third year in a row, uh, they've won team state championship. Had two individual state champions, uh, Karan Smith and Koma Cormick. Uh, so certainly congratulate the kids, all of them, the qualifiers, the state placers, and the champions, and, uh, Coach Eric Decker and his, his coaching staff.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Southall.
I'd just like to thank the city staff for their hard work on the presentations that we had tonight during the work sessions, and to thank the people who came here tonight and watched us from home to pay attention to the city government, and in particular, thanks to the people who have volunteered to serve on their various boards and commissions. Um, it's a lot of work, and, uh, we do appreciate their time and effort, and we encourage all citizens to put in applications. We, we have lots of slots that maybe need to be filled sometime in the future. We certainly would like to have some applications to work with.
Okay. Councilwoman Andrews.
No comment tonight.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything, and again, this is a little different, so we're going to go back into closed session to talk about, uh, uh, business interest locating in the city, and this is in accordance with section two point two, thirty-seven, A, five. Is there a motion?
One quick comment, I don't normally say anything, but.
Go right ahead.
Not to overlook anybody, also, the, uh, Pecosin Show Choir won first place in the region over the weekend at Mitchell High School.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Have a grand son who's there, top of the.
Yeah, very good. Thank you for that. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, we go back into closed session. E.V. please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Uh.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven zero.
We're back in closed session. Okay, we're back from our closed session. I'll ask for a motion that we certify that closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session in that we talked about only what we convened that closed session to talk about. Second.
Okay, motion made in second. We certify the closed session. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, and a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
E.V., please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor.
Ah.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
All right, we adjourn.